To God, here we are again at your footstool. Just full of Thanksgiving, Lord, thanking you for your many and bindable blessings. We said, "Thank you, Lord." Lord, as we come tonight to meet about the business of Dublin City, we pray your continued hand upon the city, as well as all the leadership that's involved in making the city what it is. Lord, right now, in the name of Jesus, we invite your Holy Spirit to guide and rule us in our meeting tonight. Lord, anything that we accomplish is not because of how great we are, but it's because of you, and we give you all the praise and glory. It is all in your Son, Jesus' name that we say, "Amen."
Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. The meeting of the Dublin City Council for December 5th, 2024, is hereby called to order. Thank you, Mr. Bostic, for providing that wonderful invocation for us this evening, and we are going to begin our meeting tonight with a special presentation. We would like to recognize the Tri-County Elite Football Team. They have emerged victorious in the Southeastern Conference Finals, and they will be traveling to Naples, Florida, to compete in the national competition, which will be televised on ESPN, and we are lucky to have them here with us tonight with their coach, Patrick Rebel, and Thomas Walker. We are grateful for this team and for these coaches and for providing these positive activities for the youth of our community. And, Mr. Rebel, if you'd like to come up and say a word or two, and then we'd invite the team to come forward and have a photograph with us.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
So, we've been... First, I'd like to thank City Council for what y'all have helped us with, with the fields on the south side, with the goalposts and doing the grass, and it really helped us because we were able to stay on the south side and play our games this season. So, I'd like to thank you guys for that. Our kids are majority Dublin... Ninety percent are from Dublin. And the biggest thing this year were to go after the kids that... To keep them out of trouble, keep them out of the gangs and violence and everything else. And so, we did... A lot of the kids that's on the team are kids that's from low-income families. So, by us doing that, we were able to keep a lot of kids out of trouble. On Saturdays, we're gone. On Saturdays, if we're not playing at home, we have traveled two, three hours away. So, we keep the kids from 6:00 that morning, and we may not come back until 8:00 that night. So, I think that was a way to make sure that they were doing something positive and not something negative.
Yeah, while I support Mr. Pat Rebel, he's been a guy that I met back in 2000, and he told me what his goal was for the children, and I hopped on. And he was a man that was putting it out of his own pockets, and a man not locally from here. He's from Florida. And he come down to get with a group of kids here. You know, he started small, and basically, he was saying, "Man, it's causing more," because it was growing, so he was needing the support. So, I got on team with him, me and some other guys. Late grave, the Maris Thomas was a part that helped us out in the beginning. But the thing that he and I seen was basically with the violence and the gangs and different things that you got in the community. If you don't keep anything, I always say, "If you don't keep anything going on in the community, then the kids will find something to do." So, we would like to keep them busy, doing some things, like he said, early in the morning, late in the afternoon on Saturdays. On the weekends, that's when a lot of this crime and different things take place. So, we came together with this travel football. We realized that we put more energy in them going out of town, playing games and doing different things. We can kind of help them out. So, we like to say, again, like he was saying, "Thank y'all for your support in the city. Thank you for what happened with the gang violence and different things." Because you look at the age group that we got, this is our 12 U. This is not the 10 U, but this is our 12 U kids. And a lot of kids, if they ain't playing football or something, they have fine things to do. So, joining gangs, basically like we did, gangs was one of the things that we joined. We played football on South Side against Scottsville, and we did positive things. But the kids don't have positive role models or father figures like ourselves that we talk to them more about the grades. We talk to them about self-sustaining, to help them sustain themselves with everyday life. So, but again, I'm not going to be long-winded with... Thank you all. Thank Pat. Thank you for the fields. Thanks, Coach Holmes, because he let us use the field at Dublin High School. So, these kids, they're going to travel now to Naples, Florida, and hope we can bring the Nationals back here.
All right. Well, thank you guys for coming. If we can get the team members up here.
We got to squeeze in.
All right, you guys are... Y'all are big enough, so y'all can just stand right here.
Y'all want to sit down, someone wants?
And do we have Major Roland and...
Yeah, we wanted to please.
Come on down with us.
Major Roland, please.
This way.
Can you sit this way? All right, here we go.
Okay, we're fine.
There we go.
One, two, three, one, two, happy.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that, and always proud to recognize the young people in our community who are doing great things. We'll now move into the regular portion of our agenda with item number one, which is approval of the November 21st, 2024 City Council Meetings Meeting Minutes. Do we have a motion?
Let me make a motion for approval.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs, a second from Councilman Smith. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
If any are opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We'll now move to approval of bills over $15,000. Mr. Powell?
Council has a copy of all the bills since our last meeting in your packet.
Any questions from staff regarding the bills over $15,000? Hearing no questions, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the bill.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs, a second from Councilman Godfrey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. I should stop here for a second and say that I forgot one other special announcement for the evening. This is Councilman Tess Godfrey's birthday, so congratulations, Tess.
Thank you, thank you.
I can't believe that.
I'm going to keep it professional. I will get up and dance, but I'm going to keep it professional today.
All right. Okay, so now we'll move to item number three, approval of purchases over $15,000. Mr. Powell?
We have two purchases for Council's consideration tonight. The first is for 23 rifles from GT Distributors Incorporated out of Austin, Texas. We had budgeted to purchase 15 rifles, but were able to get some better pricing through a statewide contract. The total purchase price is $19,548.62, and this is for the police department. We have some currently... We have some military rifles that we got through a program that they were running several years ago. Those rifles have become in need of some parts being replaced, and we've gotten word that that program was going to end at some point in the near future, and we may have to return those rifles. And so, this will start the process of beginning our own stock of rifles that we actually own. We'll have to do this over the next three years. We have totaled 63 rifles that the department has, and this will replace 23 of those. Staff recommends that you approve that purchase. The second purchase is for window replacement at the water plant, the surface water plant at Parker Dairy Road. This is also through a statewide contract, and it's for 18 new YKK thermally broken storefront windows. And the contractor for this is Lynn Construction Contract Incorporated, which is out of Claxton, Georgia. The total cost is $46,691... Excuse me, $690.21. This will be paid for out of 2024 SPOST dollars. This is a part of a larger project at the surface water plant to do some interior renovations as well, but this will replace all the windows at the facility. Those are the two purchases for Council's consideration tonight. We ask that you approve those.
Okay, we went over those purchase details at pre-council. Are there any additional questions at this time?
We can let them know that we are going to use our local YKK for those windows, so we're supporting them.
That's right.
All right. Any other comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Godfrey, a second from Councilman Colby. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. We'll now move to item number four on the agenda, which is the second reading and public hearing of ordinance 2407 to amend the FY25 budget. Mr. Powell?
This is ordinance number 2407, an ordinance by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to amend the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes. Amendment is that the revenues and appropriations that were originally budgeted at $95,364,169 be amended now to $96,828,144.
All right, that is the second reading. We will now have a public hearing on the amendment of our 25 budget. At this time, we'll have a public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak regarding this budget amendment ordinance, now is your opportunity. If anyone would like to come forward and speak regarding this budget amendment, now is your time. All right, with no one wanting to come forward to speak on this, we will close the public meeting and turn this matter over to council for action. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs to approve the budget amendment, a second from Councilman Smith. Now, the only comment I'll make is this... The same comment I made at our last meeting, which is, "Thank you to Mr. Daniels for putting these numbers together, for adjusting the budget to show what our performance has been over the beginning of this fiscal year." And in summary, our revenues are a little bit higher than we budgeted, and our expenses are a little bit lower than we budgeted, so overall, we're in good shape to hit our budget targets or potentially exceed them for the year. All right, if there are no other comments, we'll have a roll call vote on this budget ordinance amendment.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Godfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Colby?
Yes.
Councilman Griggs?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
All right. Thank you again, Mr. Daniels, for your work on that. It's great to know that whenever we have any kind of financial questions, that we can always get a reliable answer from you, so thank you for all you do for the city. We'll now move to item number five, which is discussion and action on a resolution for a lease agreement with Oconee-Faline Technical College. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2454. It's a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin, Georgia to accept and approve the terms of a memorandum of understanding with Oconee-Faline Technical College to provide adult educational resources at the location of 511 Charles Manning Senior Way, Dublin, Georgia, to authorize the mayor to execute the same to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. For a number of years now, the city has provided a space at the... What's called the Oconee Cultural Center, which is the small building just out in front of Oconee Gym and to the left. And they provide adult education classes there, and there you can see on the screen, there's a flyer about the courses that are available there. And this contract is required to be... For the school, they require it to be renewed every year, and so we're asking for council to do that.
Yeah, this is a great offering from OFTC. If you want your GED, if you want workplace literacy, digital literacy skills, you can get those. The only requirement is you have to have a state ID card. Those classes are offered, of course, at the Cultural Center at Oconee. Also, they offer them at Cattle First Baptist Church and on Prince Street at the Transform Dublin facility. So, I hope that anybody in our community who needs that, you know, they've got a place to go where they can get that additional education. So, we're leasing... This would lease this building to them at no cost, so they can offer those services. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Colby, a second from Councilman Godfrey. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. We'll now move to item number six, which is a resolution to lease space to Congressman Allen. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2455, which is a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin, Georgia to accept and approve the terms of an agreement for office space for the office of Representative Rick W. Allen to authorize the mayor to execute the same, set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. Again, for a number of years, we have had our United States Congressional Representative at Office Space available here at City Hall. I think the... I'm trying to think who the first one was that we had here, but he's passed away now. But this is for Georgia's 12th Congressional District, which we're a part of here in Dublin. Ricky Allen is our representative. Troy Windham is his local representative here. The office space provides a location for members of the public to come in. If you have questions about any federal programs or need any assistance with getting federal resources, he is available to provide information on that and connect you with the right individuals up in Washington. In addition to that, having him here in the building has been beneficial to the city. Whenever we also have needs up in Washington, he's able to help connect us with the right folks. There, if they have these leases within their district, they're required to renew those with each new term, and he'll be starting a new term in January, and they do have two-year terms, of course, and so this is leases for the next two years with Congressman Allen.
What are his office hours again, just for the public's?
He is here on Mondays.
All right, so on Mondays, the Congressman Allen's office is open for anyone needing assistance with VA issues, IRS issues, HUD issues, and that office is here at City Hall. I guess it will continue to be here if we approve this lease agreement. So, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs, a second from Councilman Colby. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. We'll now move to item number seven, which is establishing city council meeting times for our next calendar year. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2456, a resolution of the city of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council, adopting and approving council meeting times per city ordinance section 218 to repeal conflicting ordinances and resolutions set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. At our last pre-council meeting, we had a discussion with the council about the desire to adjust the meeting times of our second meeting of the month, which happens on the third Thursday of the month. Our meeting dates are set through ordinance section 218, and that ordinance reads that those... Our council meetings are to be held on the first and third Thursdays of each month, and then the time is to be set by resolution of council, and so that's what this will accomplish. The first Thursday of the month, the council has requested those meetings remain at 5:30 in the afternoon, and then for the third Thursday, the meeting will be moved to 12:00 noon. Hopefully, this will allow for people who are not able to be here at 5:30 to be here at noon, and then vice versa. People who can't be here at noon could attend the meeting at 5:30. So, maybe we'll be able to have a different... You know, open it up for more people to be able to attend council meetings.
All right, any discussion on this item?
We will still have that Facebook Live, no matter what the time is. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, council meetings are always available on Facebook Live or recorded, if you want to look back at older ones.
And this, I should mention too, this won't take effect if you approve it tonight until January. So, our first meeting in January will be on January 2nd, and that will be at 5:30 the kind of normal time. And then the third Thursday of the month, on the 16th, that'll be at 5:30... Oh, excuse me, at noon, if you approve this.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to establish the new council times.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Godfrey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Griggs. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I just want to say...
All right, the ayes have it.
I just want to make a comment about that. I have a lot of senior friends, and like changing this to like 12 o'clock on the third Thursday of the month, they... I think they were 10, because they don't like being out in the dark in the wintertime. So, I think this is a great thing, and for those who also work, they can come on their lunch break, so I'm happy about that.
Good. Well, I agree with that, and I think that we want to have maximum transparency and maximum openness to the citizens, so having a variety of meeting times is a good idea. All right, let's move to item number eight on the agenda, which is a resolution to approve an ease... A quitclaim deed from the city to... A quitclaim deed from the city. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2457. It's a resolution of the city of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council to execute and deliver a quitclaim deed of certain properties and establish easement... I'm sorry, quitclaim deed of certain properties and easements to Continental Farming Corporation and Sisterland LLC to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. For those that don't know, the city owns the Wings facility and the property that it's on off of Fire Tire Road, and there's an old driveway, a shared driveway easement, part of it on the city's property and part was on the neighboring property, right on the property line, as you can see there in the middle of the screen. And back in 2005, the city deeded or quitclaimed the part that was on the city's property, but on paper and the title records, it looks like we still have an interest in the part that's on their property. So, there's a pending sale on that property, and in order to clean up the title records, which I think, in speaking with our staff attorney, Mr. Poole, we technically don't have a legal interest in that anymore once we quitclaimed our right to the easement on our side, but to clean up the title records and make sure these people can get title insurance on their property, we need to execute a quitclaim deed of that easement on their portion of the easement.
All right. Any questions about this? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Smith, the second from Councilman Griggs. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number nine, discussion and action on a resolution to authorize a Hillburn Park design build contract. Mr. Powell?
Resolution 2458, a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to approve an amendment... Nope, I'm sorry, to approve a contract with Garbit Construction Company to establish... What's printed here is not correct. That's titled incorrectly. This should be a resolution by the mayor and council to authorize a contract with Garbit Construction Company for a design-build project at Hillburn Park at Pritchett Park to authorize the mayor to execute and deliver the same to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes. We advertised for firms to submit qualifications for a design-build project at Hillburn Park, which also includes a new bathroom facility and pavilion at Pritchett Park. We have, of course, the public knows, we've got a new playground that's been installed at Hillburn that's being used by many, many people, my family included, and there's still some work to be done to complete this park. When we had our strategic planning session back in February of last year, the council indicated that Hillburn Park was to be completed first, and so this will do that. We still have some design work to be done as far as landscaping, as far as lighting, signage. There's some demolition work to be done of the parking lot to accommodate a new bathroom facility there, which is much needed. There's also, we've... As the public's probably seen, we've demoed the old pickleball courts that were there on the front of the property and have to work through some issues there with the soil to determine what we can put back there, and that may or may not be pickleball courts. And so, there's some design work to be done there, and the council's got some decisions to make on that. But we also want to incorporate a walking path that goes around not only our property, but the school's property, and the school owns the two fields that are there, and they're in agreement with that. And so, we... This will accomplish that. Garbit Construction submitted their qualifications. They're very familiar with doing this process, the design-build process. They will work with us. They have an architect, which is Fry Design out of Macon, Georgia, that will work with us, staff and the council, to decide the fine details of this, get that finalized, and get construction documents ready so that they can then go out and do all the work and really turn this park around. The fee is 8% for Garbit and 6% for the architect, which is typical, and that's based on what the total construction cost ends up being. This process, just... I didn't mention this in pre-council, but this process is very much like a GMP process. We'll go through this design. We'll talk about the costs involved and get estimates as we go along, and then when all of it's finalized, we will amend this contract with a guaranteed maximum price of the cost of the work, and council will have... That'll be brought back for you guys to approve, and once you do, then they'll be able to begin work on the project.
Okay, and I think it's also good to note that we have a couple of things here. One is that in-house, we got to this level of design work. And then we also worked with the University of Georgia. Which group was it to do the landscaping?
It's their landscape architect students.
Okay, the landscape architect students at the University of Georgia provided a draft landscaping plan as well, so hopefully that will reduce some of our third-party costs, and this is a percentage contract, so you know, it's not based on... You know, we're not paying a certain amount of money. Hopefully, the work that we've done up to this point will reduce the overall contract cost. All right, do we have any questions or comments regarding this? All right, if not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Smith, a second from Councilman Griggs. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Look forward to getting that work started. Also, want to thank the Lawrence County Commissioners for approving funding for building a dock at Springdale Pond, a bridge and a fishing dock at Springdale Pond. Appreciate your collaboration with the city on that project out there. I know people from both within the city and in the county have already started using Springdale Pond, and we still have some amenities to put out there, but I think the fishing dock and the bridge will be well-used, so appreciate that. All right, next, let's move to item number 10 on the agenda, which is action on additional travel expense for council members Benny Jones and Chris Smith. Mr. Powell?
The travel policy that council's adopted, we establish each year a budget for each council member in their travel, and Councilman Jones and Councilman Smith typically attend the National League of Cities Conference, and that is held twice a year. The upcoming conference, which is the second one within this fiscal year, is going to be in Washington, DC, where it typically is in March, and if they do attend this, they'll... After the trip and their per diem and hotel and airline costs, they'll be slightly over their travel budget by $1,200 each, and per the policy that requires council to approve before staff can authorize those expenditures. I know that Councilmen Jones and Smith find this trip very beneficial. For those that don't know, the National League of Cities is a nationwide conference that representatives from all cities across the US attend. There are many vendors and different experts that also attend, and they provide training, they provide access to resources, and they also, you know, provide networking opportunities to learn about what other cities are doing, and that's how a lot of new ideas come to Dublin. I know that years ago, when Ms. Drigger attended once, I think that's how a teen court came to Dublin, so this... I think Councilman Smith and Jones find it very beneficial, so they're asking for...
Councilman Smith, we want you to find out a stray dog solution.
Yes.
Yeah. That's what you mentioned.
All right. Any questions or comments regarding this from council members? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilman Colby, a second from Councilman Godfrey to approve this item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. At this time, we will conclude our regular agenda, and we will have citizens' comments. If anyone would like to make a comment, you're welcome to come forward and make your comment. As always, our city clerk, Ms. Browning, will set a timer. Anybody want to make any comments this evening? All right, with no comments, we will go ahead and have council comments, but we will go into a brief executive session to discuss personnel matters after council comments. So, I think... Ms. Browning, were you able to put the forms together for that? Okay, great. So, at this time, do you have any comments, Mr. Daniels? All right, Mr. Groover, thank you for being with us this evening. Any comments?
No comments.
Ms. Browning, any comments?
No comments, thank you.
All right, great. Mr. Brown?
I'm a little under the weather. I'm going to refrain.
Okay.
Merry Christmas.
All right, thank you, Councilman Brown. Councilman Godfrey?
Happy birthday to me. No, but thank you all for coming out. Um, also, um, congratulations to the Tri-County Elite Football Team, very proud of those kids, um, and just thank everybody for my gifts. Y'all will see me on the streets of Dublin with my new weed eater blower, hard hat. Oh yeah, I'm ready. So thank y'all for that gift.
All right, well, th, those are perfect gifts. As most people know, Councilman Godfrey, uh, loves having clean and beautiful streets and part of her gift package was a hard hat, a blower and a weed eater, so, um, I know they'll be well-used, so congratulations, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Colby?
Happy birthday to Tess.
Thank you.
And I just want, um, this is our last council meeting of the year. It's hard to imagine, um, we're looking at three years now on council, um, as at-large